Good evening, everyone. This is the Lexington County School District 3 Board of Trustees regular monthly meeting. It's Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, and we're at the Batesburg-Lieblein High School. I'd like to welcome everybody and wish everybody a Happy New Year since we hadn't met this year. So I officially call this meeting to order. First up, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance by one of our ROTC color guard.
Forward, march! Comma, march! Comma, march! March time, march! Left turn, face! Colors, pop! Freeze it, arts!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Right turn, face! Forward, march!
And we will remain standing for a prayer?
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please watch over this meeting and everyone in attendance and help our community leaders, administrators, and district leaders to make decisions that benefit the faculty, staff, and students of all the schools. Help all of these people to remember that they are making decisions for our futures. Please grant them wisdom and courage to do what is right. Amen.
Takes us to Section 1.4 of our agenda, which is approval of our agenda. Fellow board members, without -- you have the agenda in front of you. Without objection, we will approve it as is. No objection. The agenda is approved. Likewise, you have the meeting minutes from the December 14th, 2021 regular board meeting, and without objection, we will approve those as well. Hearing no objection. These meeting minutes are approved. Dr. Gunner is going to join us via telephone. I apologize, I failed to include her before we started. Hello, Dr. Gunner. We have you live in the board meeting now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 1.6. It's the school board signing, the South Carolina School Board Association ethical principles folder. So we will -- everyone will sign this folder. And I will read the poster. As members of the school board of Lexington County School District 3, we pledge our efforts to improve public education in our community and will solemnly try to represent the interest of the entire district when making decisions and to rely on available facts and on our judgment rather than on individual or special interest groups. Understand the proper role of the board to set policies governing the district and to hire the chief administrative officer to carry out these policies. Encourage and open the exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process. Seek regular communications between the board and students, staff, and all segments of the community. Attend all board meetings to study issues facing the board and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion at such meetings. Work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner, befitting the public trust places -- the public trust places in the position of the school board trustee. Communicate concerns and public reaction to the board policies and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner. Support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. Avoid conflicts of interest and to refrain from using our board positions for personal or partisan gain. Encourage recognition of the achievement of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents. Support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. Take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the board or administration and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act. Study current educational issues and to participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Board Association. And make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning. And we'll get Dr. Gunner to sign this, and it will be posted in the district office.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Section 2, our consent items. And first up, Section 2.1, our financial report. Ms. Roden.
Hi, good evening. You have the December information in your packet. I just want to point out for our taxes, we got more money since we're getting near the end of the year. People paid their property taxes in November, so we got more showing up on the property tax line. And we got our Tier 1 money is due to us on December 1st, and we received that. That's on the first $100,000 of your home that's exempt. We are spending our Easter money, so we're collecting on that. And you can see from the building project that we're making, you see the fence out front, they're making progress, and we're paying for that. Our revenues are still less than our expenditures year-to-date, so we have a healthy fund balance, so we're still able to, you know, be positive with our fund balance. So do you have any specific questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roden. Next is Section 2.2, our superintendent's report. Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to show you a few before and after or during photos. So this start back at August the 10th, and I think you will find your picture up there somewhere. I think there's one person up there whose helmet doesn't fit, but I believe that's me. But anyway, besides that, I wanted to just kind of go through a few things with you and kind of give you a little bit of an update. So here's the before picture. So we take a look before we started moving any trees in the front or made room for a retention pond or started clearing any of the back cay area. And so we know the layout already, and I've got this flipped around a little bit, but we know we're going to focus and start with on the new cay addition. Now, the pointer does not work or it won't show up on the -- it works, but it will not show up on a television screen, so bear with me. So here is the really the layout of the new cay building, and I've tried to label it so you could read it a little better. But again, you know, we have what we refer to as our high bay areas, which is agriculture, welding, and building construction, meaning again, they will have the really tall rolled-up doors with high ceilings so that they have plenty of room to work. And then on the other side, we have the health science, engineering lab, and law and public safety sector. If you look down to the bottom left, you see the little blue like corridor that connects the new cay building to the existing facility right now. So to take you back again, this was on our groundbreaking, so we've gone from that to started moving a little bit of dirt. So again, we started going in and, you know, grading that and starting to add all the underground utilities, the drainage, sewage, the stormwater drains. And so it's been quite a bit of work that has been completed. I don't know if you can see it very well, but we also had to put up a safety or retaining fence around the construction site to keep our students safe, and so that's there as well. And again, you can see progress as they have moved about. For early on, we really had the benefit of a lot of dry weather. December was not quite as favorable for us. So you can see, it's interesting when you look at from the drawn photos that these really look like toys down there playing in the dirt. But if you stand up close to them, you realize how large they are and how large that area looks now that it's been cleared out. Looks a lot, lot larger than when we had grass there in a walkway. According to Ms. Louise Riley's research there at one time, and there's some discussion about what was there. We know that there was a college there, but her research says there was actually a hotel there before the college was there. And so I would believe her research because I know how thorough and accurate her research has always been. Well, up under where that college was at, we had what's referred to as unsuitable soil. We just here call it bad soil. So when they started digging into the foundation, they found the foundation and the sewage and some of the drains, that's a little too much information, I know, from the old hotel, and so we had to pull some soil out. Now, the good thing is that it's not really that difficult to take unsuitable soil and make it into suitable soil. You just need a little bit of time. So we did dig some of the soil out, moved it into another location on campus, let it dry out. But in the meantime, we brought in additional dirt so we didn't have to wait on the dirt to dry, and we'll use that dirt in further construction. So if you look kind of in where it's a little bit darker and there's still some construction equipment there, that's about the location where they found the majority. And again, they just had to pull that out because they couldn't get the dirt to compact well enough to hold up the foundation. So that's all been taken care of. And so this takes us through, most of the grading now has been complete, and you can start to see some of the foundation work in the bottom right corner. And so they dug out there. And this is -- they made a lot of progress over Christmas. Now, what you're seeing, if you can try to remember the layout, you look in the back left corner, and you see the outline of the Agriculture Science Building. If you look in the middle, you see the outline of the welding. In the right corner, you see building construction. Now, if you look in the bottom right, you see just a little bit of the law and public safety sector. And now you notice that the rest is dirt, so they haven't gotten to that part yet. Just another angle that you can see from what's been done. Again, now this is facing back to the existing cay building and the tennis courts. As I said, we had a little bit of rain over Christmas, but these trenches are not full of water. Actually, there's concrete up under there. But what I'm showing you again, that you can see how it can go from just very pristine looking to that to this in just a matter of a day or two. But they have dried this all out. But again, I want you to see all the intricacies of making sure that we have all the rebar in place, all the piping, all the electrical conduit. So there's a lot going on, and that's why this is taking, you know, the time that it's taking because there is a lot to make sure because it's very difficult to tear up a concrete pad or floor and go back and add the things that we may need later. Now, I show you this one because this is facing the existing building. I wish this pointer would work, but if you look up, you see the entrance to the cafeteria, and the students can go in. If you look to the left in this little alcove, this is where we're going to join up the building. Again, here's some more piping going to there. Additional, again, more and more work. This was yesterday. This is today. So you can see the progress they made in just a matter of days. They've dried in most of this. On January the 17th, they should be pouring everything that you see there in the concrete. And then on the, on this closer side for the health science and lab and the law and public safety, they'll be finishing that up very quickly too. But they did go through and put some sand on the top to go ahead and get this dried out so that it's ready to pour next week. And there's another view. You'll see that on the far left, there's still the section for the health science still needs some more work. Now, I turned this around for you so that this is, so that you can see, if you turn off of Summerlin and go down the road, then you can see it's upside down because I want you to be able to see.
Can you restart that? All you got there. So I've got this turned around so that you can see how the cay building is going to fit in. You'll see this corner right here. So what's going to happen is that when you add this other section, there will be a hallway that will come off here and it's going to join right in there. So that's how it's going to connect to the main building. So this is the way you normally look at it, but I need to flip it around so you can see how that slides up into the existing building. So again, it's just a bit there and it's going to slide right into this for out of the way it connects. Now, we've saved some pictures of what the entrances are going to look like, and so I want you to be able to see that. And I've got this turned sideways, so if you were, if you look at the computer screen is the bottom coming off of the access road off of Summerlin, you've got an east entrance and a west entrance. So the east entrance, if you come off Summerlin to the main access road, this would be the entrance that you would see. So this is the public entrance to the new cay building. And if you look on the left, you see the awning, and so that's for that class, which is law and public safety. If they want to come out and work some outside, they can. But what's really especially nice is on the other side, you can't see in the picture for building construction, welding, and agriculture, they have these large awnings so they can open up these high bay doors, go outside and work and weld, work on agricultural equipment, or actually build things that they want to construct. But the good thing is that in the midday and afternoon, all that's going to be in the shade even more, so it's going to be really nice for them to be able to work outside when the weather permits. Now, the students, if they're leaving the cafeteria and coming out the back door, this is the facade, the entrance that they will see as they enter the new cay building. So to kind of let you know, based on where you're driving from, that you would see the following from the, for the students and the bottom from the public access. All right, so back to the original before with all the trees. So I want to take just a moment and talk about the new front addition and what's going on there. I know you can see that from the road, but you can't always see inside the fence. So this is the front of the school when completed. This is what we expect to see. And again, taking a look at the footprint, we, to see again, what you, we've already presented this to you as well, but we know we've got the band and art and the classroom and the media center, administration and guidance area, and of course, you know, this is all facing Summerlin. One of the things we've had to do is to make sure that we protect our students during construction. So if you see the red outline, that's where the fencing is at, so that's where the construction area is going to be. If you ride by, you know, you can see that. But I also want to point out the 66 parking spaces that are right there in the front in addition to the ones that we already have. So we are protecting those additional, those parking places that we have. But again, it's going to be nice to have a lot more parking there in the front so we won't have to park on the grass. So as you drove up, I'm sure you noticed this is the entrance to the school at this point. So we've cordoned off anything down past the main entrance. And if you look at it, Summerlin, you can see again where they have started removing trees. Looks a lot different there from that vantage point with no trees. Again, just some, a couple additional pictures there. This was yesterday. Again, they still had lots of stumps and things to clear up, but this afternoon, they've really done a lot of grading, and it's pretty clear in there now. Again, looks a lot better today. This is from yesterday. And so I just kind of wanted to show you at this point where they're at now, and it won't be long. As soon as they finish that, then they'll start, they'll start the foundation work there as well in the next few days. And again, this is the final outcome for the front. Any questions on the construction? We're still on track for this, for the cay building to be an August 2022 opening. Okay, I want to bring one other item if there's no questions about the, how we're progressing with construction. Today, we found out that in the Senate, there is a bill that's being fast-tracked. It's called S-935. And I just want to make you aware of the ramifications of this bill. This bill is a voucher bill. And what it's going to do is if we have any students that live in our district that attend non-public schools, they're going to take all the funding that we would receive if they attended here and send it to that private school. Now, think about that for a second. If they don't attend here, we don't get funding for them, right? So they're going to take funding that we don't get from them and send it to private schools. So, you know, if, you know, if it's $4,000 and we've got 100 students, which, you know, you multiply 4,000 times 100 and it, you know, it ends up getting pretty quickly to $400,000. So I just want to make you aware of that. If you have any strong feelings on that, you may want to call your senator, your local representative, and let them know how you feel about that. Not telling you which way to call, but just want you to know that, to make you aware of that because it is going to hurt rural districts much more than rural small districts than larger districts. Because again, it's based on the funding that you get through EIA and those things that, and we get a larger percentage per student than they do. Anybody have any additional comments or questions?
Dr. Atkinson, I was just looking at this, the COVID numbers. How are we?
Well, last week, we were faring fairly good. We had, last week, we had 11 students that were pos, I mean, sorry, we had 11 staff members that were positive or symptomatic, which is about double what it was for last year. We have picked up some more today and yesterday, so we have an additional 24 staff members that have tested positive in the last two days. So we're at 34 there. So our staff numbers are increasing. Student-wise, we have been in, we have had many more students test positive earlier in the year than right now, but for our staff, it is, it is getting concerning, the number that we have had or do have out. So again, right now, we have a total of 34 across the district. So we're doing all our mitigation strategies and, you know, we're doing our best there to make sure we're keeping our students safe and doing our best to keep the doors open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Next up is Section 3, our recognition section. We have three items, and Ms. McKenzie Taylor is going to lead us through that.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, can I combine items 3.1 and 3.2?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's my honor and my privilege to be here tonight to recognize two of our Board of Trustees members for their longstanding service to Lexington County School District 3. This recognition is provided on behalf of the South Carolina School Boards Association, and it is something that they do annually across the state for board members who reach their 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40-year benchmarks. And this year, we had 52 board members in South Carolina be recognized for their service. And of course, two of those board members, as I mentioned, are here in our great school district. So board members, if you would, please stand when I call your name, and I will present you with your official pin and certificate. We have Ms. Cheryl Burgess, who is celebrating 20 years of service to Lexington 3, and Ms. Stacy Derrick, who is celebrating 10 years of service. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. So on behalf of the students and the staff in Lexington 3, thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your vision throughout the years. We're truly grateful for your long-term dedication to the Batesburg-Lieblein community, so thank you. Mr. Chair, can I move on to 3.3? All right, thank you. We're excited to also celebrate all of our school board members this month as part of a special month that is put on by the School Boards Association, our School Board Appreciation Month. And this month is set aside annually to recognize the more than 600 school board members in our state, including our seven board members here in Lexington School District 3. So in an effort to thank you for your leadership and your service, we have a short little video that we would like to share this evening.
Good evening, Lexington 3 School Board members. It is School Board Appreciation Month, and we are so grateful to be with you.
Thank you for your leadership and for taking time out of your busy schedules to help us fulfill our mission of appearing students for the future now. Thank you for providing our school district with vision.
For having been for all of the students and staff.
And for always being our biggest cheerleaders.
You truly make Lexington County School District 3 the best place in South Carolina.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballnight.
Thank you, Mr. Ballnight.
Thank you, Ms. Spence.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Ms. Derrick.
Thank you, Dr. Gunner.
We salute our Lexington County School District 3 School Board. Go Panthers!
The district is also excited this evening to present all of you with a special commemorative palmetto tree plaque that is there at your seats. And for those of you who are here in the audience, I'll read what those say. Lexington County School District 3 salutes you for being an advocate, champion, and voice for our Panther students and staff. Thank you for believing in our mission and for providing invaluable leadership and support. School Board Recognition Month, January 2022. Again, we hope you enjoy these, and whenever you see them, I hope you think of how appreciative and grateful we are here in Lexington 3 for all that you do for us. We certainly appreciate it and are grateful to have you as our Lexington 3 School Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, McKenzie. That was very touching, a very nice video. And thank you, Ms. Burgess and Ms. Derrick, for your commitment.
And thank you, Ms. Burgess and Ms. Derrick, for your commitment to our district for the many years you've put in there. So thank you as well.
Takes us to Section 4.0, our public participation. Do we have any cards? No cards. Moving right along. Section 5 is our information item. First up is instructional highlights from Ms. Sonya Brandt.
Good evening. Thank y'all for being here and welcome to Batesburg-Leesville High School, best high school in the state. We're so glad to have you here tonight. Whoa, scared tie. What we, I had a professor once in college who used to always say, even though I took all those classes during the daytime, who said, "Thank y'all for coming out on a cold, dark night." So thank you for coming out on a cold, dark night. I have some faculty and staff members here. I want to thank them especially for being here tonight, one of whom is Mrs. Haggard, formerly Ms. Pouncy, who was recently married. She has, she took the initiative herself to bring in the board and share her students' heart with you tonight, just as a little extra bonus. So thank you, Mrs. Haggard, for that and for all that you're doing in our art program. As you know, our district in our state has been quite committed to the profile of the graduate. And in that vein, the Department of Education has initiated a new program that I want to share with you about. The Class of 2022 will be the first class in South Carolina who can graduate and earn what we're calling, or what the state is calling, Seals of Distinction. Basically, the Seals of Distinction will recognize students who have achieved academically in various areas. I will say that Lexington School District 3 and Batesburg-Leesville High School have been a little head on curve on that. I believe back in the mid-'90s, we started awarding the Academic Diploma. At that time, I was a teacher here during those days, and that was an exciting thing that we did, that our students continue to work toward and are excited about. But this will be an additional endorsement that would come from the State Department of Education. There are four different categories in which a student can earn a Seal of Distinction. And the first one is the Honors category. Now, I'm not going to read all those courses for you, but there are several courses that they have to take, honors level, AP, dual enrollment, all those count towards this distinction. And you see that there's a GPA requirement, as there is in all of the four categories. But that's the honors one. The next one is college-ready. You know, it is the job of K-12 education to produce career and college-ready kids. And we've made that our push here in our district and certainly here at the high school. And so this is an additional accolade that those kids can get by being college-ready. And you see, again, there are specific courses they have to have, and there's a GPA requirement or an SAT or ACT requirement. They can meet it either of those ways, much like our own academic diplomas, like we planned this for them. Secondly, career-ready. Those are our, we're always working for that as well. Again, certain requirements from courses. And you see then their GPA requirement, but they also have to have an industry certificate or credential, a career readiness certificate, or a silver or higher on the win/work keys, or a work-based learning placement. So we have many, many students who are going to meet this criteria as well. You can, you remember at graduation, we have a lot of students who wear the CAKE completer cords. A lot of those same kids will be getting this distinction. And then there's the specialization. This one I love because we want to make college and career-ready kids, but we also want to meet their individual needs and their individual interests as they move from our school to their next destination, whether that's the military, straight into the workforce, or two- or four-year college. So this one allows those opportunities for kids to really tap into those interests that they have. You can meet it through a variety of ways. There's a STEM group that explains how you can meet it that way. A military group, so our kids who are very active in ROTC and achieve a certain score on the ASVAB can earn that for being a military specialization. The arts, as we mentioned earlier, they can earn this distinction if that's where they've put a lot of their passion and their work into their schooling. And then finally, world language, which again, a lot of our students are very active. I'm always impressed with how many of our world language students go at least through the third level of world language, and many into a fourth level. So we do a great job with that here at our school, and this is a way for those kids to receive some recognition. And you see, for all these specializations, they need to have a 3.0 GPA, which nine times out of 10 are actively engaged, involved students do. This is, as a high school principal, these are the words, career and/or college-ready. Many of our students are both. They meet both criteria. But again, to be career-ready, you're looking at being a CTE completer plus a credential, a silver or better on work keys. We had a tremendous outcome last year with our work key scores. They can score 31 or better on ASVAB and a work-based learning experience. So those are the things we're looking for, for being career-ready and college-ready. Of course, it's going to align to those ACT and SAT scores, AP credit or dual enrollment credits. So again, we have a huge population of our students who are currently involved in at least one dual enrollment course, which is a great, great thing for our kids. But don't let me tell you about it. Let's listen to the important people.
Hi, I'm a senior at Batesburg-Leesville High School, and I'll be earning the Law and Public Seal on a promise. I'll be earning this because I've taken Spanish 1, Spanish 2, Spanish 111, and I'll be taking Spanish 103 next semester. This will help me a lot because knowing a different language will help me keep my kids, when I grow older, become a dictionary. I can teach them about Jesus and everything like that. And also, I'm a new teacher, so it'll help me keep my students that have different backgrounds to be different approaches.
My name is Amy Naughton. I'm a junior participating in the honors year. I have gotten messages that I'm taking honors classes and dual enrollment classes, and I'm also pursuing my specialty, which I want to very fast. Soon, I'm going to be a teacher because when I get to college, I'll be attending all my courses and also beginning my natural playing softball. And overall, I'm just going to be very lucky.
Hi, I'm Stacey Jackson, a senior at Batesburg-Leesville, and I'll be earning the career-ready seal and sticker. I get a real distinction because I participated in our work-based program and I completed our business pathway that I created. Classes that I took in our business program at the CAKE building have helped me tremendously, specifically entrepreneurship. It helped me talk to community. It helped me to narrow down more about business, getting my roots deep, and helping my mental systems to be a work-based.
My name is Brett Derrick. I am a senior at this high school, and I'm earning Military Civil Protection for Union ROTC High School Local Board of Directors. The Military Civil Protection was assisted by my postsenior at the University of Central Military College of South Carolina. There, I've applied to the Department of Defense for the Department of Defense, and this Union ROTC High School Local has helped me sell my skills and other things that will be useful in a 20% of this system.
And I just want to leave you with this quotation. Champions don't think twice about their future. They know, they know it is going to come anyhow, and so they prepare for it. And that's what we're trying to do with our students here, is to make sure that they're prepared for whatever their tomorrow holds. And the most exciting thing about education today is those tomorrows are broader and wider than we've ever seen before. So that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions? All right, y'all know, go Panthers!
Next is Section 5.2. Back in early December, many of the board members attended the South Carolina School Board Association Legislative Advocacy Conference and Delegate Assembly down in Charleston. And we're going to hear some, share some information from at least one of the members.
Thank you. That is the favorite conference to go to because you get to have some input into the legislative process. And two of the members of the legislative panel were Senator Mike Fannery and Senator Shane Martin. And board members were allowed to speak at the microphone after they presented and to ask questions of this legislative panel. And I was next at the microphone until Ms. Burgess called time, and I had to go sit down. But I was able to go up there and talk to them afterwards just a minute. And what I told them was, and my concern, is that teachers locally and elsewhere across the state and the nation are leaving, and, you know, obviously, the nation doesn't apply to them, are leaving the profession in just droves because of testing and duties and procedures that are being required within their classroom in addition to the standardized testing that's required by the legislature. And I gave them examples so they'd know where I was coming from, and I said continual testing, progress monitoring, retesting of the class on multiple skills while you're still trying to find time to entertain or at least instruct the other 20 or more kids in a classroom, and then still find time to teach that material. And then meeting with data teams, coaches, math coaches, technology coaches, literacy coaches. We have to attend grade-level meetings, vertical team meetings, consultants, especially at IEP meetings, faculty meetings. And they said, "We know." They said, and I'll tell you exactly what they told me. They said, "We're the guys that can fix this." They said, "The educational oversight committee is partly to blame," and they said, "Re-succeed needs to be revamped." And they said, "We're the guys that can do it." So I wasn't the first person they heard it from. We were stacked up there trying to talk to them. So they are aware. The question is, how fast does this improvement take? I don't know. It is very heartwarming to see legislators who understand what the problems are, and they did.
Anyone else? Okay. Takes us to Section 6, our action items. First up is Ms. Price with a Beta Club trip, I believe, to Myrtle Beach.
Good evening, everybody. As I think you've been informed, the convention for South Carolina Beta Club will be held February 4th and 5th in Myrtle Beach this year, as it has been for every time we've been. This would be our ninth year attending. We have 39 students who are interested in going this time. Ms. Hallman and I will be also attending, and four chaperones, four parent chaperones that we have. We've asked to extend the trip a little bit this time because the convention has just grown so much that activities were starting earlier and earlier on that Friday, and it was harder for us to get there in a timely manner. So we're hoping to leave after school on the 3rd and return on Sunday the 6th. So any questions that you might have about that, I'd be happy to try to answer for you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Batesburg-Leesville High School Beta Club, attending the South Carolina Beta Club Convention, February 4th through 5th, 2022, at Myrtle Beach, Hilton in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina.
I have a motion by Ms. Carey that we give approval for the high school Beta Club to attend the South Carolina Beta Club Convention on February 4th and 5th, 2022, in Myrtle Beach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Derrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up is some second reading of some policies, and Ms. Rye is going to cover that.
Well, good evening and Happy New Year. We do have for you tonight the recommendation for a second reading of the policies that we brought last month, and those policies include Policy IHAC, Social Studies Education, Policy IKF, and the Administrative Rule IKFR for graduation requirements, Policy IKA, and the Administrative Rule IKAR, grading and assessment systems, Policy IHBG, and the Administrative Rule IHBGR, homeschooling, and then Policy JLDBB, and the Administrative Rule JLDBBR, which is suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. There have been no changes since first reading. I did want to add for Ms. Carey, I know you had a question in particular about the graduation requirements and grading and whether or not students had ample access to the GPA conversion chart especially. And I thought this when I was at the podium last month, but I wanted to verify, and Dr. Roberts verified, it is printed in the student handbook, which they have access to in their Google Classroom as well as on the district and school webpage, and they also receive it in their Google Classroom, which you may or may not know that each grade level here at the high school has a separate Google Classroom, and they send announcements out to them. So while we probably would prefer hard copy, we get it to them in electronic form, and they are very aware of it that way, as well as through their IGP meetings.
They probably are much happier with the electronic.
They don't want the hard copy. We would just be wasting money and picking it up off the floor at the end of the day.
I agree.
Any questions from Ms. Rye?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we give second reading approval of Policy IHAC, Social Studies Education, Policy IKF, and the Rule IKF-R, graduation requirements, Policy IKA, and the Administrative Rule IKAR, grading assessment systems, Policy IHBG, and the Administrative Rule IHBGR, homeschooling, and also Policy JLDBB, and Administrative Rule JLDBB-R, suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention, as recommended by the administration.
I have a motion on the floor by Ms. Boltknight that we give second reading approval of Policy IHAC, Social Studies Education, Policy IKF, and its Administrative Rule IKF-R, graduation requirements, Policy IKA, and Administrative Rule IKAR, grading and assessment systems, Policy IHBG, and its Administrative Rule IHBG-R, homeschooling, and Policy JLDBB, and its Administrative Rule JLDBB-R, suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Burgess. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss employment matters.
I have a motion by Ms. Burgess that we move into executive session for the discussion of employment matters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boltknight. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are in executive session.